Our, oh, unfortunately, Paul isn't here. Did he reply, Heather? So Molly, can we bring this meeting to order? Good with that?
Yes.
Would you like to look at the minutes for our meeting on February 5th?
I did.
Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. And we're both in. Oh, Paul is here. Thank you. Paul, we're just looking at the minutes. We just started, literally. Hear me talk about it? Because I feel like I'm talking, Molly and I are talking, I really would love to have a forum where we're back at a table.
Yeah.
Heather says it's a little difficult to do because people are zooming in, particularly public officials that might have something to contribute to the discussion.
Oh, sure.
All right, so we have a motion through the minutes.
Am I seconding it?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So we have a very large agenda tonight. And if you remember, one of the conversations we had with our Public Works and the Corporate Council, and actually Sergeant Baldis was to see if there were any ordinances that we could look to amend, update, or delete. Or one and a half inch, Heather, of the ordinances.
Yep.
So, and it may be, I've asked Heather actually to get an updated list of all the ordinances, so as she updates them, I know we can all have them. It'd be helpful, right?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe each member of the committee would like to have that? No particular? You want all the ordinances?
Uh, no.
So it's just Molly.
They're available online.
Yes, they are. I, I'm not something tangible. It's just who I am. But yes, you can get them online.
You're showing our generation short there, as a woman.
All right, so the first, so I wanted to, I did get a call from Chief Baldwin, and since they don't have anything pertinent on the agenda relative to the police department, or they have, they are not coming tonight, but they do, they have been reviewing their ordinances and will be forwarding them probably before our next meeting. So that's good. So let's look at the ordinances on Chapter 33. You might be able to get it online if you, do you have copies, Paul?
I do.
Okay, Heather.
Heather's probably easy to find. Can you forward the link to, there's a specific, a dedicated link to the ordinances, right?
Okay, yeah. I'm actually going to be sending out emails to everyone in the world.
With that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So this is actually a new ordinance trying to instill the Inland Wetlands Commission.
Well, yes and no, if I might. I don't mean to interrupt you.
Council.
So, and Nate is appearing via Zoom. He can explain things that I can't, but he, there's two proposals from Inland Wetlands. One is to edit Chapter 33, which is the statute that creates the commission. And the main thing there is changing the number of members from seven regular members to five regular members, and then also including three alternate members which weren't there before. And then the rest of that statute, the rest of that ordinance goes on to talk about how they get appointed, so they're in staggered terms. And again, Nate can speak if he, if I get it wrong, but apparently that commission has had an issue having quorums. So they felt that in order to remedy that, they needed to reduce the number of members. So it would take fewer members to-
Aggred their terms at the same time, the thing.
So I don't, Nate, if you're there and can hear me and can speak, do I, is that right? Do I have that right?
Yes. Actually, Nate, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can't see you, but-
Yeah, I'm having visual problems on my end, too, but, but I can hear you all. Yeah, Mike summarized it well. That's, that's exactly the issue. Especially for applications that go on to planning and zoning. Often they'll require a wetlands permit prior to, to their approval. So, you know, if we get held up because we can't have quorum and they can't make a decision even on routine, kind of non-impactful sort of activities, it just holds it up months often, just because it takes a couple of meetings to get wetlands done in the first place. So this is really just an opportunity for us to, you know, allow them to do business with, with less members.
You know, Nate, the other thing that I've noticed is in Subparagraph A, you are proposing deleting that art that states that one member may be appointed from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So can you, can you speak to that, why you think that's appropriate?
Sure. I mean, this was, this was something that Jeremy Leifer, our city planner, we discussed. Really, it's just, it, you know, it doesn't really add anything to the ordinance. It does say may be appointed from planning and zoning. But, you know, that they don't really need to be authorized to do that. So it just kind of seemed unnecessary since it wasn't requiring that to be the case anyway.
Okay. So, so that's one part of the Inland Wetlands proposal, and I don't know if you want to handle that separately. The other part is the citation procedure, and there's some pretty, some substantial changes to that ordinance.
I don't think we should do it separate, Mike.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, of course.
So it says here that there's seven members currently, and this will go to five regulars and three alternates, so eight?
Correct. Right.
Do you need to have the three alternates is maybe your question?
What they're trying to say is there were not three people to go to to get a quorum.
Well, we have seven now. Why, what's the purpose of having one more? Is that so they have a quorum?
Ask Nate.
The idea there was that they're permitted to have that many members, and it would just be more, you know, yeah, it would, it would make the likelihood of lacking quorum more unlikely. Makes sense.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
My feeling on this particular thing of changing the numbers is, I would, I would, I would support it on a one-year trial basis. My, my general feeling is, I think we have, just in very broad terms, we have a huge problem in the city, state, and, and national government with fewer people being involved in government rather than less. And my general sense is, I, I want to encourage more people to get involved, not less. This goes against that. But there is a very practical issue that they're referring to, and I understand that as well. So when you get down to a very small group, you have a very small group of people suddenly making what could be very long-term generational decisions for an entire city. And, and that goes against my grain of more, more of Torrington citizen input. So I think we'd best serve to, if we go forward and approve this, approve this with the caveat that it's for a one-year review. And at the end of, you know, and a year from now, it comes before the City Council for a discussion, how did it go? And citizens are made aware, if you have any objections to it, you know, it's not the time to talk, and therefore, and I think that accomplishes both ends.
So sometimes hard to put that language in the actual ordinance. If we could trigger a date in a year from now?
Well, I think we could do that on the agenda item for City Council approval. City Council approves it for a one-year period.
I mean, I don't think we want to put it in the ordinance.
Correct.
Put it as a sort of a notation for a year from now. I wouldn't have any objection to that.
Other members of the committee feel about that?
I have no problem with that. I have no problem reviewing it.
More discussion when it comes to the citations, Paul, and the whole procedures, citation. But I, if we're okay with the language that is currently proposed for this, and we move it forward to the City Council, and the City Council do that, that's the caveat.
Yep.
So is there a motion to approve the amended ordinance number 33? For Chapter 33?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, we approved one thing. This is great. So, I think. So we can go to the Council with public hearing, but let's not set a date yet. Let's wait and see how we do with this citation.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the next one is changing the citation provision, the procedures for issuing citations and fines. And I would just defer to Nate on that. So I, we did provide today a copy that shows what was inserted and what was deleted, so you can see what the changes are. But as far as explaining why Inland Wetlands thinks that that's important, I'll let Nate talk about that.
Thank you. Nate?
All right. Yeah, so this is something that has been done in other municipalities through the state. Basically, what this would be, the, our Inland Wetlands Commission and the city are enabled to be able to impose fines, very similar to what's done for zoning. So in, in the zoning regulations, we can issue $150 a day fines for violations of the zoning code. The, the statute setting up inland wetlands is a little different in that they, they have a maximum that citations can go to of $1,000. So it's a pretty nominal sort of fee that can be imposed to help remedy violations. The, the purpose of this, you know, we've had quite a few, you know, wetlands violations that have come up through the years. And, and often our, what we've observed in zoning is that, you know, we're not doing, we don't issue violations in zoning to try to collect revenue or to, you know, impose some kind of unnecessary hardship. We're really just looking for compliance, and we're looking to, you know, get the offender's attention. The way that we do this in zoning is that we issue our initial $150 citation and give them a grace period to respond. That's what I assume that we would be doing for inland wetlands. But anyway, yeah, so this is really just another tool for us to, to gain compliance for inland wetlands violations without having to, you know, resort to going to Corporation Council and, and going to court right off the bat. This would be just a, a basic step. And it really, again, the key language is that there's a maximum fine of a total of $1,000, and each violation shall be $100. Those are the major changes. This, this language is inserted in the fees section of the, of the ordinances right below where the zoning citation is, the zoning citation ordinance language. And it's, it's mirrored off of that language with changes made, you know, to meet statutory requirements.
Is there some discussion on this? Questions for Nate? So I guess I have the $1,000 maximum. Is that per owner of the property, so that if there are different areas of that person's property?
Uh, yeah, it would, it's, the way that it's written, it's, it's for, it's per violation. So let's say a property, you know, on Winston Road has one violation of, of wetlands that have been mapped in the backyard. Let's say they've been filling them in. And then in the front of the yard, there's a, the Still River, and there's been violations in that location as well. Those would be treated as separate violations.
One property owner could have more than $1,000 of-
Correct, but it's per, but since, you know, you have a, in this instance, you have two violations, then in that case, they couldn't exceed $2,000.
Three violations, it would go up to $3,000. I'm just being hypothetical in terms of, you know, I do think of farmland. And, sorry? So, I, anyway.
Well, and I can, I can speak to farmland. In, in the inland wetlands statutes, farm, farming is, is an as-of-right activity that can be exempted from inland wetlands regulations. So we regularly have folks come in and say, hey, I'm expanding cropland into wetland areas, or I have to build this bridge over a water course to, you know, access my hay barn in the back of the property. And the commission just determines that that's an as-of-right agricultural activity, and it doesn't require a permit. So we really, we have a very light touch with, with the regulation of agricultural activities. The only time that that would ever happen would be if, say, you know, your residence is on that property, and it's a driveway just accessing the residence with no accessory agricultural structures or anything agricultural associated with it. That would be required to get a permit, but any activity related to the farming itself is exempt by law.
Thank you for the clarification. Molly, do you have any questions or?
No.
Do you have any additional comments to make? For Council?
I think I would just point out, as Nate says, that there is an exemption for agricultural uses from inland wetlands regulations. But if I'm not mistaken, Nate, the, the individual, the property owner has to apply for that, right? There's a form to fill out to apply for that exemption?
That's correct. We usually just take a, a inland wetlands application as our intake form. There's no fee associated with it, and they would bring that to the commission. You know, they could either be there or not be there. The commission would review it. It's obviously better to have them there to kind of talk about what their practices are. Because they just, basically, their job is to determine whether or not it's an agricultural activity. It doesn't need to have any kind of tax-exempt status or filing with any other organization. It's just, you know, if, if someone's hanging a property, but they're not receiving, you know, tax abatements or any, any kind of other thing that's designating them as agriculture, that's irrelevant. It just has to do with the activity itself.
Right. So I don't know if that alleviates some of your concerns. And again, it's, it's kind of broad. It's agricultural purposes. I, you know, it's, I guess I feel like farms is under the umbrella of agricultural, but it would apply to properties that you wouldn't normally think of as a farm. You know, meaning there's no animals.
Right, right.
They're not going with corn.
But they may be tax-exempt, or they may have the tax status as a farm.
Well, that's a separate thing. That's not related to this. They would need to file a separate form. And, and whether or not they have agriculture, you know, part of their property dedicated to agricultural purposes so they get a break on their taxes, that's neither here nor there, really, as far as this procedure is concerned. That doesn't matter. They just have to establish that they're using it for agricultural purposes. I think, in fact, without naming names, there was an individual recently who applied for that exemption who's on Mountain Road. And he's doing a lot of work in a wetlands area, but he satisfied the Inland Wetlands Commission that he's engaged in an agricultural purpose. So they decided he was exempt and didn't need otherwise, otherwise necessary permits.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think otherwise, this really, as Nate pointed out, this does kind of track the statute that provides the authority for the city to impose fines, and there's an appeal process involved. You know, if somebody gets, gets an assessment, there's a hearing officer. They can appeal that, and ultimately, they have the right to go to the Superior Court to appeal that. I think the, another difference, this is maybe just semantics. The, the prior ordinance, the one in existence now, talks about a zoning enforcement officer, and that's being changed to an inland wetlands agent.
And in the city of Torrington, that's the same person, wearing different hats.
Is that you, Nate?
Yeah, that, that would be me.
All right, so this is basically mirroring what this, mirroring the state statute in, in this section of citation procedures. So-
Yeah.
Who chooses? Trying to move this to City Council? Is there a motion?
Some of them.
Second.
Okay, so now we could probably set the time for last, the City Council on the next posted agenda, if we could set a public hearing. I don't know. Yes. Perfect. Yep, we can move along. All right, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda. Oh, do we do your motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's no one here to oppose. All right, thank you. All right, our next item. Number three is the Amendment to the Ordinance 161, Property Management. This is the blight. And I know Mike-
Yeah.
The Council had this on our agenda. Been wanting it on our agenda for some revisions.
Yep, so there are just some definitional changes and additions. Jeremy Leifer, and I think Nate and Ashley also, Ashley Clement were involved in going over this. So in the section on Scope 161.2, it just adds mixed-use buildings to the, the structures that are subject to this ordinance. Also, Subparagraph 3 also now includes industrial. And so those are non-dwelling uses. So you'll see in that Subparagraph 3, it eliminated that may include one or more dwelling units because that reference is really a non-dwelling use. Let's see, on the next page, under Administration, and you'll see somewhat throughout, there was a statute that came out last summer that changed the, the blight regulations from the statutory's perspective, with the legislature amended 7-148. And it's a real long citation. 7148. I think it's C, yeah, 7148, C7H is, is the enabling legislation that talks about towns having the authority to adopt regulations. And what that did was eliminated non-owner occupants. So it used to be that a blight enforcement official, if they were issuing notifications of violations or citations, they had to serve it on three, three entities, really, the, the property owners, non-owner occupants, which are tenants, and lien holders, like mortgage holders. So the state statute eliminated non-owner occupants, so taking them out of the equation, which makes sense because it really is the owner of the property who's responsible for remediating blight conditions, whether or not they did it or their tenant did it. And, you know, of course, you think in terms of, we have a lot of absentee landlords. And so even though it may be the tenant who's creating the condition, it's up to the landlord to, to deal with it, even to the point of perhaps evicting their tenant. So the state statute eliminated non-owner occupants, so our ordinance now eliminates non-owner occupants. In the definition section, 161-4, this adds a Subparagraph 13 that says another blight condition is vermin and/or animal infestations. That's not in the state statute, but I saw that in the blight ordinance that I think it was Noggett had, and I thought, that sounds good. That's a good idea. So that's one change there.
And where is that, Mike?
It's in Section 161-4, the definition section. And under the definition of blighted condition?
So, yeah, you said, oh, you know what?
It's too, it's too light for you to see, right, right, right?
Right. So it would be added. Could you read that again?
It just adds, as, as one part of the definition for blighted condition is the presence of, and there's that whole laundry list of originally 12 things, and now it just adds a 13th that's vermin and/or other animal infestations. So if you have a building that maybe is infested with rats, or, you know, you've got squirrels living in the soffits, there's holes in the soffits, and the squirrels are in there, or the raccoons are in there, that just is now, if you adopt this, included in what could be considered a blighted condition.
Okay.
I'm just going to hit what I think really things that make a difference. We did, in the definition section again, and so this probably, again, is too late, too light for you to see, but-
Yeah, how come this beer print is bigger, so?
Yeah, I know. So it adds a definition of days, because there wasn't one in here. There are certain requirements that talk about a number of days to do things, but there was no definition of days. And people are always thinking, well, is it business days or calendar days, or what is it? So we're saying it's calendar days. But not including the date of receipt of the notice. So you'd count the day the notice goes out, but you wouldn't count the end day, and it's calendar days, not business days. Nothing really significant there. Again, deleting non-owner occupant. So one, I think, would be a significant change. So on page six, six of eight.
Right, we did have some changes on page five that were-
Yeah, I didn't think they made much of a difference, though. They didn't really substantively change anything.
I just had a hard time reading the bliteness. You're going to need a new printer in the City Park's office, I think. Okay, we can move to six?
Could be. On page six, the, the present ordinance didn't specify a dollar amount for fines. And again, the, the new statute, it increased the amount of the fines that you could charge. So the feeling was, not only do we want to track the statute, but let's put in the, in the ordinance what the fines are. So on page six, right at the top of the page, you see 1, 2, 3. At the end of page three, which is very faint, I'm sure in your copy, it just says, you know, the amount of civil fines, penalties, liens, special assessments, cost of fees that may be imposed for non-compliance, which shall be the amount specified in Section 161.7E below. And then, and there on the next page, on page seven.
Could you read what those amounts are?
Yeah, sure. So it's $150 for each day that a violation occurs at an occupied property or such, and this, I think, is just hoping, you know, trying to prevent us having to amend this ordinance anytime the statute changes. So right now, the statute says it can be $150 for each day that a violation continues or such other amount as specified in General Statute, Section 7148, C7H15, as may be amended from time to time. Because the legislature may at any time amend what you can charge, and I think the city wants to always be able to impose whatever the statute allows. And then the next one is 250. So $150 a day is the violation for an occupied property. You know, people living there.
Okay.
250 is for a vacant property. So those are like the worst cases. Talk about absentee landlords. There's nobody even living there. So the penalty is even higher for that. And again, that catch-all language at the end, or such other amount as specified, et cetera. And then $1,000 a day for any violation that continues at a property, and there's no distinction between occupied or unoccupied, if it's the third or more such violation during a 12-month period as defined in the statute. So that really kind of ups the ante a bit. That's where you can really get into some significant penalties that are imposed. The other thing that I want to point out that is pretty significant is back on page six. Excuse me. So a new Subparagraph 5, which I see you've highlighted, but it's pretty little. So that, we didn't have that in the current ordinance, but the statute also provides that the ordinance can say that agents of the city can enter a property during reasonable hours for the purpose of remediating blighted conditions, and that the owner shall be responsible for any and all expenses incurred in connection therewith. So again, the, the new state statute, the amendment to the state statute has that in there. It provides that you can do that. And what it means is that you don't need the landowner's permission for two things. The way I read the statute is, you don't need their permission to go onto the property to inspect, to see if there is a blighted- to inspect, to see if there is a blighted condition, with the caveat being that you can't enter a dwelling. So if there's a house on the property, you can go onto the property to take a look around, but you can't enter the house. And so really, all the blight stuff is all what you see on the outside, it's not what's on the inside. And I reinterpreted the statute to also allow the city to take steps to remediate that blighted condition, again, without the owner's permission. I don't think anybody's ever done that. Right, and I actually sent out, excuse me, I sent out an email to KAMA, which is, I forget what it is, Connecticut Association of Municipal Attorneys. It's a listserv that Vic participated in, and I'm on now, and I sent it out, and I said, this is how I read this, has anybody ever done it? More than one person said, I agree with you that that's how it reads. We've never done it, and we probably won't do it because we don't want to be sued. So there could be a test case. Like, again, I think the statute allows it, but who wants to be the test case to do that?
I just think of the health and safety of the city employee that would actually go into the blighted house.
Well, you're not going in the house. That's the thing, you can't enter the dwelling. It's all on the outside.
I thought this was allowing it to, allowing someone to go in, so it's not
So it allows them to enter the property.
Enter the property, no.
But they can't go into the house, and the statute's really clear on that. They can't go into the house. And so some people may say, well, yeah, you know, a lot of times the blighted conditions are in the house, if you have people who have hoarders. And you know what, what it comes down to is, well, that's a DSS issue, maybe. That's a, geez, you know, we haven't seen Aunt Jane in a while, please go do a wellness check. And they do a wellness check, they see a condition like that, and then they end up maybe going to the probate court and getting a conservator, or they go to Torrington Area Health, it could be, it could become a Torrington Area Health issue.
There's language in the state statute, this is accordance with?
Yeah.
Can we?
Yeah.
Can we use that language in our ordinance?
That's it, exactly.
Is it in there? I can't, I can't read this, to be honest with you.
So this is the statute itself.
It says that in accordance with the state? It's here in the document?
Yes.
Okay, okay, fine.
So the state statute says that a municipality may make and enforce regulations for the prevention and remediation of housing blight or blight on any commercial real property, including regulations, and it goes on and on and on. And one of them is, including regulations, authorizing designated agents of the municipality to enter property during reasonable hours for the purpose of remediating blighted conditions. So that's what is in this ordinance, word for word.
Okay. So really, what we're changing here are adding those that are consistent with what the state statute is, and the fines.
Right. And, you know, the way I would pose it to you is, the state statute authorizes the city to adopt regulations that say that, but you don't have to. They don't mandate it, they just say, if you want to, you can do this. So, you know, the blight committee felt, well, gee, if the state statute says we can have that authority, let's take that authority, whether we ever do it or not is another thing.
Well, I think her language, right, the language, yeah, consistent with is the pocket language, consistent with the state.
Yes, we're adding it to our ordinance.
Right, it's word for word.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think, you know, the only it's, you know, all of these times that we sort of, you know, put into our ordinances fines, you know, I think the challenge has always been collecting them. The only time, and I feel like the I've been working, I think, quite hard over the years to identify properties and deal with them. I don't know how you'd collect these.
Well, most of the time, the way the collection happens is
At the time of sale?
Ultimately, you put a lien on the property, right? So either if they want to refinance, or they're gonna sell, they have to get a release of the lien. And in fact, we just did one, the city council just, oh, no, I'm sorry, it's on the agenda for tonight, in fact. There was a property that was in a foreclosure, that prior to the foreclosure, had a lot of blight fines assessed, and there was a lien on the property. It went to foreclosure, the lender took title to the property, and actually requested that the fines be reduced, so they could sell the property. And the blight committee felt, that's appropriate, that's okay, we'll agree to that. We gave them a dollar amount, I think it was $54,000. The original lien amount was, I think, 80, something like that. But the blight committee felt like, okay, we'll take 54. They paid the 54, the check cleared, and that actually is on your agenda for the city council meeting tonight to authorize the release of that lien. But yeah, that's how you collect it, it's I mean, I've only been here since December, but
I know, I know.
Nobody's writing checks paying these
I know. This has been the issue, is the collection of these fines. I'm curious, how would you come up? How did the blight committee come up with 54,000 versus the 80? Is there some?
I don't know, I wasn't there for that meeting.
No.
That happened before I got there. I don't, Nate, are you still there?
No, he's gone.
No, he's gone.
What the heck?
You know, I don't, all I, I don't know, I just, there was a, you know
Maybe a formula, or I would think they'd have to have some
I think part of what they think about, because we've had this in other discussions, they try to think about, what did it cost the city to take steps to enforce our ordinance? As far as manpower, how many hours did the people in the land use office and the blight enforcement officer, you know, how many hours did they spend out there doing things? I wasn't, again, I think their decision to agree to take 54,000 was before I was even on board. What went into that discussion, I don't know. But, but that's what they did, and it was communicated to the law firm representing the lender, and they said, okay. I think it was, they made the offer. And in fact, the blight, my recollection of that was, the blight committee, they were thinking they would accept no less than 50. And the lender came back and said, we'll give you 54. And we didn't say to them, we'll take no less than 50.
It was negotiated between the city and the attorney.
And so we said, okay. We would have taken 50, they want to give us 54, that's great.
Right.
But again, how they came to that, I don't, I don't know.
Okay. Yes, a lot of other changes, I think, in number
Well, 161A is just talking about the hearing procedure for the citation. So the steps that happen is, first thing that people get is a warning, like a notification of a violation, which is just a warning that says, look, this is, this is the condition you have on your property. You've got typically 30 days to remedy it, and if you don't, you're gonna start incurring fines. And my experience, again, with this committee so far, and with Ashley Clement, who's the blight enforcement officer, is if somebody calls and makes a good faith, says they're gonna make a good faith effort to clean it up, and they need more time, they give them more time. You know, we're not really interested in piling up fines and getting liens and taking somebody's property. So the first step is a warning letter, a notice of violation. And if, at the end of the time period, they haven't done what they're supposed to do, that's when you start issuing the citation notice, and that's where the fines start to accrue. And then the person who gets that citation notice can request a hearing. They can't request a hearing from a notice of violation. The hearing is requested from the citation notice, because that's when the fines start to approve, start to accrue. And, you know, the procedure we set up here kind of is in keeping with what we've been doing, but also in accordance with the state statute.
All right, I know I'm gonna be a little picky here, just sort of the grammatical. The C, D, and then we go down to E. And then is that an F that I see?
Which section are you looking at?
So it's just above.
So 161
1-7.
7, A, B, C, D, E. Oh, you're right, that should be F.
Right.
Yeah. And actually, in the next section too, B is missing.
Right, so, well, A is deleted, so A would be B.
Yeah.
And then B, C, so make those changes. Okay. Any other question? We still have more to go. Okay, the criminal line.
So 16110, the municipal remediation part, that's that's also what makes it clear that if the property owner fails to remediate the blighted conditions, the city may authorize its agents to enter the property for purposes of remediating the blighted condition. Again, that's something that's not in the ordinance now, not anything that they've ever done. What the city has done in the past is what's called, and I think you've seen this, a lien, a clean-to lien, where we do it with the property owner's consent. So they agree that the city can come in, clean the property up, to the satisfaction of the blight enforcement official. And then whatever it costs the city to do that becomes a lien that gets recorded on the land records, and again, it'll get paid when they refinance or sell. So that's happened multiple times in the city. But again, my reading of the statute is that the statute gives the city the authority to do that, even without the property owner's permission. And, you know, whether we ever would and want to become the test case for that, you know, I don't know.
Mike, and what is the triggering mechanism that allows that?
If they haven't remediated the blighted condition within the timeframe given them by, you know, by the different notices that they've gotten.
Okay. But will one of those notices make that a point? If you do not, then the next action will be?
Yeah, I think what, if this gets approved, yeah, if this gets adopted, then we'll have to change the forms that they're using now
Okay.
for citation and the notice of violation, to make it clear, yeah. I would say even, and I'm not even, I'm not sure, I don't have a copy of it now, what the notice of violation looks like, but certainly if the fines aren't, maybe they should be. But any, I think any kind of penalty, I would recommend, should be a bigger font.
Yes, correct.
And bold. But yeah, that's a good point, so the forms would have to be changed, to just make that absolutely clear. And even then, I I think, I think that the blight committee would, unless it's a property that's really been an issue for a long, long time, I doubt that they'd want to take that step. They're really, I've been impressed with them, because they kind of bend over backwards to work with people.
Yeah.
So far.
And that's still the most efficient way of getting the result that you want.
Right.
As opposed to going illegal and then kicking it from the bottom.
Yep.
So. I agree.
We just have one, it's the bottom of Highland Avenue that actually went to litigation. Vic brought a lawsuit to foreclose on the lien.
Yeah.
And it came up for trial, and Judge Pickard is one of the last cases he did before, he just retired. And we reached an agreement with the property owner that we, you know, even though it had already gone to judgment in the city's favor, we're giving him more time, trying to work with him, giving him, so we entered into an agreement that was filed in court, giving him another 30 days to clean it up. But the agreement, and the agreement says, and then if he doesn't, then the city's gonna go in and clean it up and put a lien on the property. And he signed that, it was an agreement that I drafted, that he signed it, the mayor signed it. So, I mean, my experience so far in the short time I've been here is, they really, they really bend over backwards to work with people.
I've heard that. Torrington's very good, that one, the city.
All right, so we're on to really begin this discussion.
Take a motion to approve, which means?
Okay, Paul has made a motion to approve the revisions in addition to ordinance chapter 161.
Absolutely.
As corrected. As corrected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, as, right, I thought I said amended. All right, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion has been passed. Same, yes, thank you. Yep, same schedule as the first. All right, thank you, Mike, that was helpful. Bye. Discussion on the Board of Ethics regulations. So I think you've all seen the minutes that were from the Ethics Committee meeting that was, my God, in April 22nd, 2015. So, can you talk to this particular regulation, Mike?
No. I don't know anything about that.
Okay.
I mean, I've seen, I've seen the minutes like you have, I wasn't consulted about that. I don't know anything about it. It makes sense, it looks to me like they're just trying to tighten up, you know, their regulations concerning what's confidential and what's not.
And I'm wondering, why has it not had any action before this committee till now?
Yeah, I don't know.
Who actually gave this to us?
So, this is something that when the Board of Ethics came about, when I got my first ethics degree, they had to do some research, because they had no, nothing to go on. So I went back for the minutes, found these,
Okay.
which were never actually added anywhere.
Right.
So we decided at some point, this is something that we need to add to ordinance, and they have ready to go by.
So you know what, I would feel better if, you know, because it's so dated, if we could have this go back to the Ethics, the current Ethics Commission, and review it to see whether or not the recommendations remain the same, or if they have any other additions, that would be my
Couldn't agree more.
Paul and I agree? For the minute, for the note?
And the Ethics Commission is constituted differently now, right? Are any of these folks still on?
Yeah, I wonder, Jane Benidi, I saw on there, CM Slavy. So, yes, I think that would be the most prudent thing to do at this point. Then we can look at it, look at it again at another time. So the larger probably discussion is on chapter 170, having to do with our sewers. So, I don't know.
I'll talk a little bit about that. Do you have a sewer? Oh, is that the sewer guy?
It's either I know, we waited this long.
I apologize.
Maybe just at this point, I'll review.
Yeah.
Oh, why this is before the
It was more for the facility, as you see, that's a more more current terminologies be used, like I brought a current WEF book. As you can see, that's, that's how they name the facilities now in all our modern classes we take today.
Okay.
So that was the, that's where we really started looking at this ordinance.
I saw the
The bigger piece, we saw some other things, like Torrington Water Company's named in there, they're now been sold, I, we're still calling it Torrington Water Company, but it made some changes whoever the water supplier is. The last section also, we're looking at, the state used to handle our miscellaneous industrial user permits. They no longer do that, they have the town do it. So we took some of their language, and I know it needs to be cleaned up. It's kind of a placeholder right now. Actually, I was told it needs to be more legally speaking. So I'm gonna need Michael's expertise with that.
Okay.
So, you know, at this point, Chair, there's a lot of definition, definition changes or update in terms of what's
Yeah.
It was
Do you want me to walk through it, one page by page?
I think, I'm through almost half of it, because, you know, the
A lot of it's the same.
Yep.
It looked to me, when I looked through it quickly, is that most of it was just changing the nomenclature. Right, from
Yeah.
From water pollution control facility to water resources recovery
Facility.
Facility, so there's just a lot of that changing in there.
Torrington Water Company, I saw that.
Yeah.
And adding those footnotes down. You know, the pages aren't numbered, but those footnotes are, seem to be new, are they new? Highlighted midway through.
I didn't know where you are. Oh. Oh, all those editors' notes?
Yeah.
Well, they must be there now, no?
I think they're there now.
Okay, they're just in a highlighted format, so
I actually wouldn't worry too much about Torrington Water Company, because I think it is still called the Torrington Water Company. It's just a division of Aquarius It's just a division of Aquarium.
If you, if that's the committee's decision, I'll keep that, I'll keep it. But I don't know, I don't know if it's in flux. I hear, I hear now that they're, oh, EverSource owns Aquarium and they're looking to sell it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't, seemed like the future was unknown there.
Well, we know, it'll be Amazon or Apple.
Yeah, right. I guess.
There's only seven entities, so.
Yeah. And it wouldn't make much difference if you wanted to just leave it as a generic water company supplier.
That's what I was looking for, yeah.
There's no reason not to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I thought this was going to be much more cumbersome, but I think you are just looking for changes and.
Yeah, well, and we were, we're looking to, because of the new facility, we're looking to, we're actually, the guys are building, we've already put the concrete in, put a new sign up.
Right.
We had an old plywood sign, if any of you have seen, it was kind of falling down, I think it was put up in 1960. We're looking to put up a better sign. So ahead of that, I would have, I would like to start working on this official name change.
All right. I mean, so the one section that mentions the Torrington Water Company, are you suggesting to change that to just the waters? I mean, he's got the Water Resource Recovery Facility?
No, I think the, the one about the Torrington Water Company just got rid of the Torrington part and just said water supplier.
Which I think is perfect.
Yeah. Right, and it's just the name change from Water Pollution Control Facility, WPCF, to Water Resource Recovery Facility, WRRF, and then throughout the document, wherever it said.
Yeah.
WPCF, now it says WRRF. I mean, I didn't see any substantive changes in any of it.
Except for the addition of the miscellaneous industrial user permits.
What page is that on?
That's at the end. There was nothing, nothing referring to those permits before. Oh, there are some changes too, also, change the name, it was DEP, now it's DEEP. But DEP used to handle all these permits. They no longer handle them, it's up to our staff.
So can you, without the, without the page numbers, can you just say, oh, here it is, is it section?
Yeah.
Subparagraph E, right? Permit required, that's section?
Yes. Uh, yeah, ordinance.
So it looks like it's 170-14 capital E.
And I think he's talking about.
170-27.
170-27, purposes, so he's got miscellaneous industrial users. So that's the section that's your, is new?
Yes.
Correct?
Well, a lot of it was taken out of what the state has.
One more time, it's 170.
170, yeah, 27. So it's almost the.
Second to last there.
Sorry, I had numbers, page numbers.
This paragraph about mandatory raises for all executives, what is that?
What's that?
I, I, I thought I saw somebody that said mandatory raises for all executives with water.
Yeah, okay.
I misread it.
Okay.
So I see what you mean, that that section could use a little tweaking.
Yes.
So I'm happy to work with you and figure out what it is you need it to say and have it say it.
Okay.
So I think if you don't mind, we'll just pass something. Yeah, what's the order to use?
Further review.
Refer to the next ordinance committee meeting with some input from our corporate council.
Okay, but is there any objections to the, the name change?
No.
You understand about that?
My mind.
So I could go forward with the sign.
I guess you could.
Is there any, is there any reason why a municipality wouldn't do that?
Not that I.
None that you don't?
Well, I mean, you're being.
Oh, because people don't like change?
Yeah, okay.
I would, I would.
Well, even some of my staff don't like it because they have to say a different name.
Right. So in my mind, it's, it's really a public works decision, and you work under Ray Drew, and Ray Drew works under the mayor, but I don't think it really is reflective of anything that's.
Ray just wants to get a new sign, that's all.
Yeah, want a new sign, that's what it is all about, okay.
That's awesome.
So I think we do need to still, as an ordinance committee, move this to our next agenda.
I moved the table.
And what's our date on that? We haven't come up with a date. But let's look at a date for our next.
Do, April 8th, that would be our next Monday.
That's good to me.
I'm not available that day. I'll be away, but, I mean, if, if we can work together on the language for that section ahead of time, then I'll just submit that to you.
Okay.
Because it's really just that one section that we need to work on.
Right.
I think so.
Yeah, everything else is just changing the name, so.
All right. You may get some other ordinances from Chief Baldwin, you know, to review, and we can just do a review and.
Mm-hmm.
Or we can meet on the 22nd. I think for the purpose of this, let's meet on.
15th. It should have been the first, but with the primary, we can't have it the first.
Oh.
So we can do the 15th if you want.
Let's do the 15th.
Want to do the 15th?
Yeah. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Or Ann? Okay.
Taking the original.
So if I may, call this regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA to order, for the record, today is Monday, March 4th, 2024. It is 6:33 PM, meeting, we do have a quorum, and it looks like all of the council, all the participating council members are here in person. We have Councilman Waldron, Councilman Iveyne, Councilwoman Spino, Councilwoman Rouette, Councilman Cavanero, and missing is Councilman Oliver, who did call to let me know that he would not be able to attend. So before we jump into the agenda, could I kindly ask us to stand and pledge a flag?
America, unto the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did we get rusty on that?
I didn't even hear you start.
I didn't, because somebody else did. Okay, so where did February go? Okay, let's jump in, item number one. I need to open the meeting to the public in accordance with section four subsection E of the City Council and WPCA meeting rules of procedure. Do I have a motion?
Come on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Thank you.
Second by Councilman Iveyne, questions or comments? Or, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open to the public, and that's it. We'll save Mr. Farley for the department heads. Item two, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from February 20th, 2024.
Come on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
Abstain.
I abstain.
All right, so for the record, I have two extensions, that's Councilman Waldron and the Councilwoman Rouette. Item number three, I will entertain a motion to approve the assignment of the fiduciant advisors LLC, the contract that the city has with fiduciant advisors LLC to Aon PLC. Do I have a motion?
Come on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And second by Councilman Iveyne. And are there questions on this? I think the, the letter was, gave a pretty good explanation of the change of name and flagship on this one. I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to waive the bid process and award the senior center awning repair and/or replacement to awnings plus of Torrington in the amount of $17,417.10. The entire cost of these services is being donated in total by a senior center member as further explained in the services for the elderly director's letter dated February 23rd, 2024.
Come on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, second by Councilwoman Rouette. Are there questions on this? I think the only thing that I would add is awnings plus was the vendor that installed the original awning, and it is a special design, so I think it's fortunate that they're still available and able to do those repairs and/or replacement. If there are no questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to release the liens listed by corporation councils memo dated.
Move.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions on the memo? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated in list. Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments on the list? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refunds indicated. Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second. In a hurry.
Councilwoman Spino, he wants to beat a record, I think. So motion made by Councilman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
Come on.
Thank you. I heard Councilman Cavanero, second by Councilwoman Spino, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open to department heads, Mr. Farley, is there a report?
Law trade.
Yeah, yeah.
Make it quick, will you?
Is there a game on that we have to get to?
There's a game.
I just wanted to give everybody an update. We went out for sale for our notes and bonds on Thursday this past week. Sale's been complete. First, I'll go back to the credit rating agencies. So Standard and Poor's gave us a credit rating of SP1+, which is the highest rating that's offered for short-term loans, so that was terrific. And as far as our bond rating went, it remained at AA minus, stable. And there's, there's only one rating higher, actually the AAA, although there are different standards as far as AA plus or AA or AA minus, but that's an excellent credit rating as well. The sale for the notes was for $34,350,000. The sale was held at 10:30. It's, it's a blind bid process. I think we had, I believe there were eight bidders. So it's a blind process, they, they can bid anytime in that morning up till 10:30, and then at 10:30, the process is shut off, and then it's revealed to us, so it just scrolls up on a screen with a listing of all the different bids. The bid was awarded to Jeffries LLC, and that's who we did our, our notes for us on our last round last year. Once again, the principal was $34,350,000. The net interest cost came out to 3.16%. They also paid us a premium of $287,166. With the bond process, the bonds went out to bid at 11 o'clock. We had 12 bidders for that process, and that was awarded to FHN Financial Capital Markets. Out of the 14 million, 4 million was for roadwork, and 10 million was for the school. The true interest cost on that was 3.09%. And the net premium that they paid us was $1,376,794.21. So in premium costs, we're close to $1.7 million, which is in excess of what they're paying us for the bonds, and it's for us to spend on interest payments or cost of issuance. So all in all, I think we did rather well. We had a lot of documentation that Bill Lindsay provided to us that showed other municipalities that were similar to us and others that had higher credit ratings, and from what we saw, we actually received lower interest rates than they did. It might have been, just been timing, I'm not sure. I'd like to think it was the great work that we put into it, but I'm not sure. But I'm very pleased with the way it went. If there's any questions? Well, I do have just one last thing. The cost of issuance, our, our cost when we go out to do this in this particular round, there was, it was $42,173.61 for the bonds, and the notes were $41,376.39. So our total cost of issuance to go out to for this process was $83,550. Those expenses are split up between bond counsel, Standard and Poor's, the bond credit rating agency, our financial advisor, printing of the official statement. There's an electronic distribution that's submitted by Standard and Poor's out to the brokers to bid on this process. And then we have advertisement by a company called Arizent. It's an alert that they send out to the bidders as well. And then our, our paying agent is US Bank, and they handle the transaction for both the bonds and the notes.
Do we have questions?
That's it in a nutshell, yeah.
I think the only thing that I would add is this round of borrowing of the 14 million in bonds, 10 million of that is for school construction, and the $34,350,000 in the bands, bond anticipation notes, is also for cash flow for school construction. It is only 4 million in this round that we are using for roadwork and infrastructure improvements for the citywide. So, and I would agree with Mr. Farley, this is our fourth round of doing this, right? Four years?
19, 20, 22, 23. No, this is our fifth.
It is our fifth. And while it never goes down to a real science, I think that there's a lot to be said for having the experience under our belt. We'll do this one more time next year for roadwork, and I think we'll still have.
Other 10 million for the school will be the last.
Yeah. We'll refinance those, those bands, and then carry some of that extra debt on the school until the school construction costs have been audited by the state. They're with, I think it's a 5% or, it was 11%, I think they've reduced it to 5% that they're holding and retaining.
Retainage is 5%.
Yes, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mayor, could you elaborate on that?
Yes. So what happens is, when school construction is complete, which they are anticipating in January of 2025, the high school students will be moved into the new building, then demolition and field work will happen until the fall of 2025, when they anticipate moving the middle school students into the building. So construction, demolition, and field work should be done, I believe, by fall, certainly by winter of 2025.
should be done, I believe, by fall, certainly by winter of 2025. However, even though the construction is complete, the expenses of construction will have been paid up. The state of Connecticut in school construction grant reimbursement withholds a percentage of the funds. And in this case, for this project, they are retaining five percent. Because then what they do is they undertake a full audit of everything that happened. Where were the funds spent? What were the, what were the, it is? Yes.
Okay.
So we continue to carry that until the audit is completed. And that's usually 12 to 24 months of carrying costs or debt service. Other questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
All right. Jamie, anything this evening from facilities? Okay. City Clerk's office? Corporation Council's office?
Nothing.
All right. We'll move into item nine. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
Come on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Second by Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll start to my left with Councilman Cavanero.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. Let me ask you first, were you going to discuss this tonight?
Yeah, absolutely. I can expand on that.
Do that.
Okay.
What I would like to discuss, which in my mind, when you make your remarks, I will sort of tag that with my remarks. Just that I would like at some point, I know we're in budget season. However, precisely because we're in budget season, at some point when we can, I would love to arrange a meeting with the BOE, especially since we have new leadership there.
Yes.
And we, you know, right two minutes ago, we were discussing the huge financial impact that this brand new school has had on Torrington. I would like to hear from new Board of Education leadership. What their plans are and their goals are for the upcoming year. And when this whole conversation about a new school began several years ago, I know I continually made the point that I would like to see serious thought put into modernizing that curriculum so that the brick and mortar alone is not going to inspire students, is not going to motivate students, it is not going to put them in a position to succeed in life. What is needed is an appropriate change to the way we deliver education. And I'm hoping at some point that the new leadership, now that they have their new school, you know, 180 million dollar showpiece, that I'd like to hear what their thoughts are going forward. And I'd like the City Council to consider that. That's all.
Do you do you want to have this before budget deliberations that occur between Board of Finance and Board of Education?
That could be arranged, Mayor. I think that would be, I know it's very, you have a very complex scheduling schedule, I know. But I think that, I think that discussion would help facilitate some further discussions, okay, when it comes to the overall budget. So if it can be arranged.
Sure.
Too much disruption in your scheduling of the budget season, I would like that, you know.
Okay. Let's see what we can do. I'm also thinking that if it's really difficult, and it's not so much for the city's budget process, but I'm also thinking the Board of Education has its own tight timeline with budget.
Yep.
It may even work to our advantage to do this the evening that the Board of Finance and the Board of Education have their joint meeting.
That'd be fantastic.
We could do, we could do City Council, Board of Ed, and then they can go into their Board of Finance, Board of Ed, and the public hearing.
Yep.
Makes sense?
Yeah, it absolutely does.
Okay.
Because you know my old chestnut, that so much of what happens now within our educational system falls outside of specifically education, the way when we were in school, and it has become a much broader, you know, city and state level issues. And having everybody in one place at one time discussing that, I think would be helpful.
I agree. Okay, good. Councilman Rouette?
Just that we had our ordinance committee meeting today, a full agenda. And I want to thank the review of our Corporation Council on some of the recommendations. We will be moving forward our approval of those three items for changes to the next, what was the meeting? March?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. And
No, April fifteenth.
Mike's trying to advise me poorly here. April 15th, as you know, with any of these ordinances, we'll set a date for a public hearing, avoid the following, just
March 18th is when we're going to set the public hearing for people.
Okay.
And then April 15th is our next.
There you go. Thank you, Heather. All right.
All right, that's great work. I'm always excited to see our ordinances being reviewed. Councilwoman Spino, anything this evening?
I do not have anything tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Iveyne?
No, nothing now. Thank you.
Councilman Waldron?
Just one thing that regards this card here.
Yes.
All right. Not going to steal your thunder.
No, that's fine.
See Paul afterward. Because I wanted to nominate Mark to be the distinguished alumnus of the board this year. Three years ago, when I nominated Steve Ruskowski, he said to me, no, not me, you should nominate Mark Cavanero. And I said, well, Steve, this is your year. So I think this year should be Mark's year.
I wouldn't disagree with that.
Clearly, my brother may have gotten the brains and the talent, but luckily I got the looks. So, you know, it all works out. Well, thank you. I'm sure
Show you the, need some info.
He would be honored, truly.
And just as a reminder, that is the class of 75 best class. So is that, is that all you that you have?
That's it for me.
Good. Okay. Now you better make sure you lobby and make sure that he gets it. It's not enough to nominate him. So a little bit of history on this. As we know, the Torrington Historical Society has been operating very modestly out of a beautiful Hotchkiss-Feiler House and the Historical Museum. And on a shoestring, you know, it's a two-person operation with a couple of volunteers and maybe some part-time assistants. So about three or four months ago, Mark McCarron and Gail Krupa came to see me to talk about an opportunity that they had been mulling over for the past 12 months or so for a complete expansion and creation of a history education, education center. This is an expansion that they are, that they envision would would play off of the existing carriage house, take advantage of some of the incredible views out of the back of the property over the cemetery and the river beyond the cemetery. And they engage the services of a world-renowned architect.
National renowned.
Sure.
He's known in Europe. He is known in
He is.
US Embassy.
Yes, he is. Mark Cavanero, who is a Torrington High School graduate, class of 1975. I can tell you that the, the presentation that Mark Cavanero has for a presentation to the public is just incredible. It is so inspiring. And I can't, for the life of me, imagine anybody would not agree that this is the right thing to do for the city of Torrington and the right time to do it. When Mark and Gail came to meet with me and Steve Temkin, another classmate of mine, came to talk about this, immediately I was thinking that this may be a CIF 2030 grant application. As a 501(c)(3), the Historical Society can certainly do that application. But knowing the value that this can bring to this community, I would like to believe that there would be overwhelming support, not only from the public, but from this council and other board members. All of the boards will be invited to see the presentation. The CIF application opens up again in the summertime. We hope that we can really create a buzz and some excitement about this and set the stage to get an application in the summer. So, Mr. Cavanero?
Thank you, Mayor, for your support thus far. I know, I know you've been involved and very encouraging toward this. A little, just quick historical background to it. When my mother was first going into nursing home and then hospice care, my brother, Mark, was coming out from, he did a lot of work in New York, and he'd always make trips up to Torrington. So he was coming up very frequently. At one point, while there was killing time, waiting to get in to see my mother, he was walking around, had not been to the Hotchkiss Hotchkiss House for years and years. And he just walked inside, saw Mark there. Mark gave him the chef's tour of the cook's tour of the place. And he was blown away just by, you know, I, my family was involved in manufacturing, you know, my uncles, my aunt, and my father, everybody, by just the stuff that we knew about. And just all of the archival stuff that's just stacked in there. And Mark, Mark was telling my brother that they would love to make a presentational space for this, you know, to acknowledge and honor Torrington's past. And I don't think what Mark realized at the time is he was talking to the right architect at the right moment. My brother, a large part of his career in architecture has been working with established cities, older, you know, in California, but also in Europe, as it turns out, for Salesforce, to make modern additions to old traditional buildings in cities that have, that have a legacy of past that they want to acknowledge and honor and commit to. So he was talking to, right, two people were talking. And based on that, Mark's got off some ideas, my brother Mark and the other Mark. So, and they've been kicking the ball forward ever since then. And I think, to me, what, there's two things, Mayor. There's two groups that I would like to invite to this, they get excited by it. And I'll just quickly say, to me, when my brother was talking about this, and Mark is, I think, again, as a city council member for many, many years now, to me, this would be, again, a presentational space that shows all of Torrington's great past, that is modern, that also, again, includes the carriage house, which is traditional, but also includes a social gathering space, which would allow for this to become a true welcoming center for a mayor and for civic leaders going forward, that would do two things. It would immediately allow the mayor to put the conversation on, we're not just some neighborhood, we're not just some, you know, suburban little town, we're not. This was a manufacturing powerhouse when the state of Connecticut was a manufacturing giant, pound for pound, in the state and in the country. And here's what we did. You know, here's who built this city. And people like to describe, up and down. And there's some talk about, about other Western Connecticut cities actually having a presence there with some of their machinery, things that, that made the American economy what it is. So basically, it's like, here's where we were. And then the civic leader, the mayor, whoever gets, now here's who we are going forward. So immediately sets the stage, literally the stage, we're welcoming businesses and leaders of, in other areas to come to Torrington, to see us in the way we want them to see us, you know, that we're not just constantly running around looking for grants to help, you know, in certain areas. We're not just, there's a vision, the mayor of the city council, we have a vision. And this becomes, I think, a real way of doing that. So this is why I'm excited. And my brother just, you know, he still has a tremendous fondness for the city. So you know, I think so, to you, Mayor, specifically now, what I'd like you to consider is, the two groups that I think would help us sell this idea to the city would be the seniors at Sullivan Center.
Yes.
And I would love, I know you're really busy, but if we could find some time, if you would go there, and if Stephen or I could go there, and with this point, is that I don't want people seeing this as Cavanero, knowing that I'm a local Democrat, that this has nothing to do with politics. This is the city getting behind this idea. And if you would like to, if you'd like to work with me on setting that up with Joel, to make that presentation, seniors, but also, I know you have a lot of, there's a lot of different economic development groups. I don't even know who they are anymore, there's so many different ones. But if we can get them excited and pull them in, and I don't know if you do that, or if Mark McKeever does that, or, you know, you know, more people certainly that would bring them to this meeting to get them excited, like this would be great for local businesses too, you know?
Absolutely.
So.
So the, the evening, because this event where Mark will be, Mark Cavanero will make his presentation as a tremendous, it's like a 10-minute slideshow that is just so inspiring. We're limited to the number of seats that are in this room. So when you talk about event space, that's the other thing that excited me about this. I can't tell you how many people call and say, yeah, I'm looking for event space for 200 or 300 people. This can fill that bill. But from that evening's presentation, which is March 25th, there will, then that presentation will be uploaded and on the website. We can very easily download it, take it to the senior center, show it on their large screen down there. I was just there last week talking with Joel. We mentioned your mom while we were there. I know he'd love to have an opportunity for this to be a presentation.
Fantastic.
Board of Education, because the intention is to make this an educational center?
Well, yeah. And one of the reasons I was hoping is that, look, as we all know, one of the new, one of the new sort of growth areas of jobs is in media content creation. Okay, that's the general term we use ESPN, content creation. Okay, that cuts across everything. You're going to make something that you're going to show somewhere. Okay, content creation. And Torrington Public Schools need to be moving in a big way toward that early on, not just as a single standalone elective, one of the conversations I wanted to have with Board of Education. But clearly, this, doing, taking the wealth of information that's in there and using that as a, you know, just as a touchstone for a high school program to, you know, to do Torrington, you know, content creation, specifically Torrington, would be a very, you know, again, leveraged conversation they have. So let me know how you want to proceed, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Can you think about it?
Yes.
How you want me to fit in with making this presentation?
Yeah, I welcome that opportunity. The, this, this evening on March 25th, our intention is also to do it by Zoom, because we are limited by the number of seats that we can set up here in this auditorium, hoping that we're going to capture a larger audience. Our intention was to make this a Zoom meeting, so members of the public could also zoom in. And have a couple of these invitations, which were being mailed out to our partners at DECD as well.
Okay, fantastic.
So, so we're trying to capture all of those. Shippo, you know, we actually have Jen Schofield, who is a resident of the city of Torrington, you know, so we intend to invite anybody that we think would have not only an interest in, you know, historic preservation, which is where Jen Schofield, the office that she's located in, but when it comes to bringing this forward for a CIF 2030 application, we're going to make sure that the right people have had a chance to see this and see the public's response to it.
Great. That sounds terrific, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome. Any other comments on this or the agenda? Lost my book too soon. If not, then I'm going to move into item 10. I will open the meeting to the public for comments on agenda items only.
Come on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we haven't received any members of the public. We'll move into 11. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Spino and Rouette. And we're, we'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you all.